East Greenbush Central School District Board of Education meeting to order for December 6th. Board members present, Mr. Dunn, Mr. Mann, myself, Mr. Temple, Ms. Taylor. We may have board members joining us a little bit late. With that, could you please rise and join me with the pledge allegiance? Thank you, everyone. So, no student council this evening, they are tied up, correct?
They are participating in caroling.
Caroling.
Students from the high schools.
Very good.
They asked to be excused.
Excellent. So, the next item would be our approval of minutes. We have only five board members for quorum, and Mr. Dunn was not at the last two, the 18th and the eighth. So, we will have to wait until another board member comes in. And Michelle can't be the one that comes in for the eighth meeting, 18th meeting, and then the eighth. We could, we can vote on that. So, we'll, we'll come back to that, board members, if we get another, another person. That's okay. Well, then move to the board forum. I'll start at my left with Mr. Dunn. Welcome back.
Good to be back.
Good to be back.
Also, good.
Jesse, good. Joanne?
Good.
All right. I don't have anything at this time. Move to the public forum, residents, students, employees, and business representatives of the East Greenbush Central School District may address the board on matters concerning programs and or operations in the district, other than matters involving personnel. Members of the board do not directly respond to assistant concerns during the public forum. If their response is appropriate, either the president or superintendent will contact the individual in the near future. Those persons wishing to address the board will be recognized by the chair of the meeting and should state for the record their name and address or affiliation with the district or business. While the board does not wish to infringe upon free speech protections, it must be stressed that the business forum is not deemed to be an open forum. The board president will conduct the forum for the orderly, efficient operation of board business. In addition, any remarks which may constitute defamatory or stigmatizing or prejudiced, we clear out of order. All comments shall be limited to five minutes. Is there anyone who'd like to address the board at this time? Anyone? Yes.
Hey, Mr. Newman. Mike Newman, assistant principal at Goff Middle School. I just quickly wanted to recognize a business, a business that was charitable to us. During the new school year, you know, they often had a little bad luck with, we had the floods first weekend of school, and we had some mold in the red house. And a quick response came, and they took care of all those things for us. After they were done, they reached out to us and said, hey, you guys had a rough start. We want to do something nice for you guys. And they said, well, we have this big field trip at the end of the school year. How about you, you know, help donate, get a couple of kids to go? And they said, sounds good, how about 10? So, they donated $6,000 to the Washington Field Trip, and that's 12.4 kids. So, we got about eight of them used already, another one today. So, they didn't want any publicity for it, but I thought we should recognize them within the district. So, I wanted just to come and say that.
Very good, thank you.
Anyone else like to address the board? No? Yes?
I guess we're both going to address the board. You either sit there, or you can come up with me. All right, come on up, come here. Hi, I'm Denise Lena. I think you need the address, is that right? Sorry, it wasn't up.
Yes.
He was yelling for. I live at 418 Luther Road in East Greenbush. My son, Thomas, goes to Janay Elementary School, and my son, Jacob, will eventually go to Janay Elementary School. I'm also on the PTO board there, and we've talked a bunch of times about, you know, several issues that we're, you know, concerned about in the school. And I know this is like budget time and time to kind of put in our wishes or things of that nature, things that we're concerned about that we're hoping to see in the budget in the coming years. So, I just had a couple of questions. One is if there is a definitive plan to reevaluate the use of space at Janay Elementary School? Just to accommodate the additional classrooms that we will probably need with the growing community and the housing developments that are going up? And in relation to that, if the board is planning to reevaluate class sizes at Janay to bring them more in line with other elementary schools in the district? So, that's my first question, and I know you don't typically answer these right now, but, um, you know, if there is anything you can provide in relation to that, that'd be great to know. My second question is, does the board currently have a full-time resource officer position in the draft budget for Janay for this next year? I did look at the school budget for this last year, or at least what was the draft, of $108 million. And just, you know, in light of that, adding one sal, one job with a salary of, let's call it $75,000, isn't even a blip on the radar in that budget. It's, you could add a resource officer to each elementary school for less than point 0.5%. So, not point 0.5, but less than point 0.5% of the budget. So, that wouldn't even mean a tax hike for, you know, that you would even notice. Maybe it's like a couple of cents, something to that extent. So, those are just the two questions that have really come up and seem to be a recurring issue, or not so much an issue, but just recurring concerns from parents that we've talked to and our PTO in general.
Thank you very much. So, some record of those questions. Just a brief comment that, you know, the district does do studies around the projections. We do a lot of long-range financial planning. We do projections around enrollment for, for the last several years to make sure that we are addressing the needs of the growing community, if any, in our capacity to serve that. So, those are all things we do look at as part of the budget process. Also, there have been ongoing discussions about the SROs and those kinds of things. And really, the, the demands of not just SROs, also, you know, the budget has to, you have to realize the, a lot of the budget that is potentially discretionary for additional items is not that big. You referenced the, the total dollar amount, but a lot of that stuff is already accounted for regarding operational expenses and staff expenses. But we do want to look at the potential for not just the SRO issue pre-K, which is on our agenda to do a study on, and some other initiatives that the district wants to undertake. So, we will definitely be talking more about those items in the future and make sure we address all those concerns from parents and the community member, not just at Janay, but across the district.
But just confirming that there is no specific plan to have an officer at Janay next year just yet?
There is no plan as of this point. There's no draft budget prepared yet for this next school year. We have had some discussions within the board. You'll see in the board goals this evening that are likely to be approved, that the board had asked for a plan to bring forward as part of the budget for school resource officer program expansion. We had a meeting last week internally with principals and representatives of East Greenbush Police Department to talk about options. There's an ongoing internal planning process going on to be able to prepare those options to bring back to the board. But we are talking about it, we are studying it, and we're going to be bringing that forward as part of the budget, the budget process. But there really is no preliminary budget at this point in time of the year for next school year. We wait until probably the third or fourth week of January until we see what the governor proposes for the executive budget from the state in terms of school aid. And then the process of developing that budget kicks in from that standpoint, that timing, so.
The trans from there, so. Thanks for coming in. It's a really exciting meeting. All right, so we do have enough for a quorum on our minutes. Emily's here, welcome, thank you. So, I want to go back to the item on October 18th. John wasn't here, Michelle wasn't here. The minutes for that meeting, any questions, revisions, or comments on the meeting, those minutes? Need a motion to approve those? Joanne, you have a second? Jesse, all those in favor? All those abstaining? One approved. And then the minutes for, minutes for our November 8th meeting, Mr. Dunn was not present. Any questions, revisions, or comments on those minutes? Seeing none, need a motion to approve those? Jesse, second? Mark, all those in favor? Approved, abstaining, sorry? John, one? Those are approved. Very good. So, now we'll move on to the reports and presentations of the superintendent. There was no one else who wanted to speak. I'm sorry, I should have answered that one more time. No? Good. In the public forum, so. Jeff, I'll turn it over to you.
Very good. I'm happy to report to the board that we were able to meet our timelines for the State Education Department for completing the independent audit of the school district for last school year. I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Mulligan to introduce our auditors to discuss the audit. And I'm pleased that Jennifer and Mary Ritzy, who's our treasurer, who's in the audience, were able to work with Bana Deo to complete what was required, and you have a very favorable auditory report. So, Jennifer.
All right, thank you. So, I wanted to introduce partner Alan Walthor from Bana Deo Group to give an overview of the audit results. So, I'll turn it right over to you, Alan, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Just to introduce myself briefly, my name's Alan Walther. I'm a partner with the Bana Deo Group. As Superintendent Simon says, we've completed the audit of the school district's financial statements for the year ended June 30th, 2023. We met with the audit committee a few weeks ago and reviewed the reports in detail. So, for tonight's meeting, I'd just like to give a very brief overview of the overall results of audit and then open it up to any questions that the board may have. I did see, I looked on board docs, I saw that all the, all the reports are posted, so I'm sure everyone read everything cover to cover. So, so delivers, we won't talk about everything, we just describe, you know, exactly what we did as your auditors. Our primary objective is to audit the, the school district's financial statements, so there's report of the audit of the financial statements. In conjunction with that, we also audit the, the federal expenditures of the school district, because the school district spends in excess of $750,000 of federal aid. We audit your extra classroom activity funds. We issue a required communications letter, and we issue a, a management letter. I'd also like to thank Jennifer and Mary, who is here, for all your assistance in helping us get the audit done. An audit is a collaborative effort. We can't audit what you provide us, and thank you very much. As Superintendent Simon said, all the reports have been issued, have been uploaded to the State Education Department, so the school district is in compliance with that. So, the overall results of audit for the year, issued an unmodified opinion on the school district's financial statements. That is the highest level of assurance that we can give on your financial statements. That is the opinion that all of the users of the financial statements will be looking for. State, State Education Department, this controller's office, and bond rating agencies. There were no internal control findings, no material weaknesses, no compliance findings with regard to your federal programs. We issued an unmodified opinion on compliance, and there were no federal expenditure findings there as well. And very briefly, financial highlights, the school district's unassigned fund balance was at, was $4.3 million. That is in compliance with the New York State 4% limitation. And the only other financial statement note that I'd like to bring to the board's attention, if you noticed, the Capital Projects Fund shows a deficit of $19.8 million. That should not be a concern of the board, because there are also $22 million of bond anticipation notes outstanding, as those bond anticipation notes are either redeemed or replaced by long-term debt. You'll recognize revenue, so it'll be, that will offset the, the deficit that shows. And that's the extent of my commentary unless there's any questions.
Questions, board members, anything? I want to thank the accounting firm, and I know that was a lot of transition time. Jen came on board in July, and Mary was out and dealing with family. And we really appreciate all the work the staff do in taking over that process and working with Bana Deo and making it a smooth audit for them. And I, just the results speak for themselves about the nature of our business operations over the years, and I know they're in fine hands again with all the transitions. So, thank you for that too, and thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. All right.
So, our next topic is the ongoing planning related to our capital project, which we are anticipating bringing forward to the community in May of this year. At the same time, we have our annual budget vote. The board is aware that the architectural firm, La Bella, represented by Pasquale Marchese, who was here this evening, has been working with the district. We've actually been working with three architects, actually four architects. Jennifer Dennis and Danielle Lewis have been joining Pasquale for some of our meetings internally, and we're joined this evening by Andy Rimpf, who is a landscape architect, who has been looking at some issues regarding our fields. So, we wanted to give an update to the board on the designing and the planning of the project that's been going on so far from La Bella. And then Jen Mulligan has put together a timeline of anticipated actions that the board will have to take. We're also joined by Turner. Turner is just here to, as support, they've been participating in some meetings as well. Beth Di Battista is the vice president and regional operations manager, and she has been part of our weekly meetings. And James Thomas was part of the process of selecting Turner, and he is, will be the construction onsite project manager once the project starts. So, thankful to La Bella and Turner for being here, and I'll turn it over to Pasquale to give us the update.
All right. Good evening, nice to see you again.
Yes.
Been busy a month and a half so far. So, before we start, I would like just to make sure, so we are going through a fair amount of slides tonight. So, I want to make sure that this is not designed at this point. We are trying to put additional information and tools in the hands of the district and the administrator to make sure that when the point, the point arrives, so to make any decision, you have enough information, you can make a pretty mindful and reasonable decision. So, I'm going to go pretty fast, because I thought I will have a couple hours, but Mr. Simon said you have only 15, 20 minutes? So, I'm going to try to fly through the slides.
We'll have you back more frequently, how's that?
Yeah, we can do that too.
Small chunks.
Yeah. So, but I, I will leave it with, with your, the jump drive with all the presentation, so you can print, and then you can look with a little bit more calm, okay? So, let's go to start. So, again, good evening. We are here, so myself, and I have with Andy Rimpf, our senior landscape architect, they are so the lead, the, lead, the team leader of our office. Other than the people that Mr. Simon mentioned, we have also a team of mechanical, electrical engineers that are going through the school. So, just make sure that, you know, it's not just me with my couple architects, but we have a team of engineers and civil engineers that are, we working all together and try to keep an update on our weekly meeting. So, the agenda for today, so it's the 2024 capital improvement referendum update. Andy will go through site and athletic field update. We will have some graphics to, just to go through, and then we have some library. So, my team went through each of the library, then are part of one big ticket items on the capital improvement proposal. And we have just talked with each of the librarian. We collect some information, invest in the information, then we collect. Instead of having just a meeting minutes, we provide some graphics. Just, again, those are just idea, then just so people can think a little bit outside of the box, just not just the wording, but graphics. So, it's, so far, we have been able to provide the graphics for Janay, Columbia, and Gulf. Then we will have some HVAC upgrade, then I will briefly provide, and then at the end, Ms. Mulligan will give an update of the timeline. So, I'm going to give it to Andy now, so he can provide some updates.
Which one goes forward, left or?
For the, no, first one.
All right. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you for, for having us here, and myself personally for, for getting to know the district and to start. New relationship for, for us, and look forward to getting to really know the campus. So, what you're going to see here tonight, there, at the seven different school campuses, you know, that the capital project referendum has a suite of improvements that everybody's looking at. You know, we have access, you know, accessibility, you know, issues or items that we want to address at just about every single campus. You know, we have safety issues, you know, whether it's obvious safety or just vehicular pedestrian conflicts, fence guards, things like that. You know, we have infrastructure needs, some of the, some of the schools drain pretty nicely, some don't. For instance, you know, so there's some water sewers, you know, storm type infrastructure that we're looking at. And then we have athletics and play. Those are kind of four main kind of pillars that you'll see that were adopted throughout the, the previous five-year capital plan. And then, and then there's other items that really interested as the project evolves and as, as design starts to learn from, from the teachers and from the academic side, things like outdoor classrooms, space, you know, things like that. Do they fit into the project, and how do we work those into the fabric of the site? You know, because your sites are, you know, East Greenbush, so there are a lot of districts where your campuses aren't just your school, they're, they're, they're community centers. You know, they're used off times and things like that. So, so, so we try to put a lot of emphasis, you know, before we're done on, on how the community uses the school, not just how the school uses your facilities. So, each of these plans, they're, they're not in any particular order of priority. But we have a seven districts with a fair amount of work at each district put into the referendum. And then we're going through a process of understanding the sites, understanding the needs of improvements that are needed. I spent bug Paul quite a bit, you know, and walked the campuses so far. So, we're, we're learning, and that's why, as Pasquale said, we haven't really designed a lot yet, but we've documented what needs to be designed, so we're programming those spaces at this point. So, first, first one up here is, you know, belt up. So, you know, a good example of traditional work that's needed at school. There's, there's areas that need some additional parking, you know, there's a demand for additional parking on the campus. There's areas that need better walkway connections or ADA accessibility connections. You know, playground is, is getting outdated, very similar to a lot of your playgrounds. Eventually, a playground company is going to really like East Greenbush, I think. You know, you've got things like the outdoor amphitheater, that's a really nice feature to have it, that belt up, but, but could be, you know, replaced, refreshed, redone. And then this particular campus doesn't have a ton of athletics, like you'll see on some of the others. But just an example of kind of the symbology and the programmatic space element showing those. Those are targeted to eventually where the folks behind me will, will work on understanding the price components of it, and then we vet that against the capital project, you know, budget that was established initially. If you, I'll go ahead, because I'm actually in control, sorry. So, Green Meadow, Green Meadow is one that's really interesting when we watched the pickup drop off, because it's, it was like a really long procession, and I happened to be there. So, that's one of the items we want to look at, how do we do, you know, pick up, drop off there? It actually was pretty fluid, but it was, as I've known, it cannot be fluid at certain times, you know, as well. Once again, playgrounds that are needing some upgrades, you have some athletic facilities. These aren't prime athletic facilities, but they're, they're school play areas, and we want to make sure, things like the backstops that are, that are really worn out. You know, some of those elements that we can replace, and a lot of being a pure athletics project, it's, it falls into that category. You have some accessibility issues, you just got, you got a couple of makeshift ramps, you got some storm areas, you know, that, that don't drain real well. So, so that's a, we're at, I'm describing everything at a real 20,000-foot level, so for purpose of time here. Donald P. Southern Elementary, really interesting when I looked at, came up, looked around, looked at the play area, and I said, well, the one is seeing its better days up on the high ground near the school. But, but it's got a nice location, it's got a nice access to it for the district. The other one, I'm like, boy, I, that's, I don't even know if I will walk down a hill. It's quite a hill to walk down. So, we're looking at spatial planning to, you know, eventually, like where, where should the playgrounds be? The relationships of the play to the, to the recess locations, to access, you know, safety and security access, you know, things like that. So, there's a little less improvements, but we'd like to get people, you see it really zigzag line, we'd like to see if we can get people down, whoops, down to that level. I went way too far, sorry. So, at, at Janay, you can see there's various improvements shown. Later on, I'm going to have a rendering of an outdoor classroom space, just to show, and it's, it's not a final design, but it's a good concept of, of what we tried to experiment with. You have some parking, some pavements, things like that here on campus that, that should be replaced or, or updated, some maintenance items. Your new playground is, is, is it in? Not, it's not in.
Now, it's not yet summer.
Yeah, I didn't think so. I didn't think it was, I wasn't sure if you're working real fast over the last two weeks. You know, there's some air, some additional parking that's been requested, so you'll see in the upper, I keep thinking it's, I'm going to point, but I'm obviously not. The point, it doesn't work, right?
If it is the.
I don't think it works with the.
If it is a TV, probably not.
I don't think. Okay. But, but near the entry point off the road, we're hypothesizing an additional parking area that can protrude a little bit into the ballfield space, but still allows that ballfields. So, that's an initial design thought idea of it, that's not the final design. Same over by the, you know, by the cinder track where the football field is on the inside, there's two gravel areas. It's obvious people drive kind of all around the track there, so we're looking at that access and security. That's a good example of one of those particular items. And then, so I'll keep going through a couple more schools here. Red Mill, Red Mill's had some repaving done recently up front, so there's some rep, you know, additional hardscape work that needs to happen. There's not good, really, a good accessible route for that public parking space out in front around the side of the building, so we're looking to make improvements there. The playground is a really big, I was amazed by the size of the playground. I mean, it's a really nice big playground, but it's, it's dated at this point. So, we're looking at playground improvement, improvements, potential things like the basketball court that's at the far lower corner on the lowest kind of plain level. From my understanding, or getting to have an understanding, is it's underutilized, and it can be utilized for maybe not its intended purpose, let's say, at night. And so, we're looking at things, things like that. Should that be potentially a parking area where people can park to use the school facility at other times, but move the basketball courts, have a good relationship with the play space, items like that? And there is some other access opportunities that we want to put in there in accessibility. Golf, golf is, I have a rendering later, so I'll probably skip this for a second, then go, I'll give you the overview, and then we'll go to the rendering. Golf, as we've talked to, to Ryan, the athletic director, and about programming of that space, looked into the, the bond project. You know, there's, there's really good potential and need for additional athletics at golf. And with this that you see drawn on this map, you can see the, the concept of a track and a multi-purpose field, which could be synthetic turf. And, and then an access road that would connect you from in front of the school kind of around to Hayes Road, and that could be not a road, but an access route that could be used. And we could also increase parking along Hayes and or that access row, you know, for the games that are played there, because there can be a deficit of parking there. Up at the end, up along Gilger Road, the town has a bike way they're putting in, or the concept of bike ways, a partnership with the, with the district. We would make improvements there for accessibility. The bus drop off is, is, we can make some improvements without having to redo the entire bus drop off, but we can make some improvements there. Signage, we can get a nice marquee sign was thought about as, as an addition. One of the signs there now, I, we're thinking about relocating, because as I got confused that I was going to pull into the two ways out, you know, as a driver, because the, the, the recirculation plan that was done, that remnant kind of is a confusing cue. So, we look at those things too, how people, you want people to get into your campuses and out of your campuses in a clean, efficient, particularly safe manner. And I can go through a little bit more of this one in a, in a second. And then Columbia, various components. One of the things that really heavy blue line on the left, you see, that would be what is contemplated for access, secondary means of egress to the district. Out on Tech Valley Drive, and then at the entry point, you can see the other heavy blue dashed line for the entrance. Um, out on Tech Valley Drive and then at the entry point, you can see the other heavy blue dashed line for the entry point, making entry improvements. Uh, the previous consultant, I've seen their, their sketches and drawings that they had for potential improvements out of there. And really to get people, there's, there's a lot of traffic, so how do we get people in and out, the intersection is, is. It's not a great intersection, we can make it work, we can make it feasible, is it ever gonna be awesome and perfect? Probably not, you're, you're, you've got your land that you've got there, but it's gonna, we can make some real market improvements to your entrance and get some really some better flow in and out. When we talk athletics, heavy use, you have a great athletic program, so there's heavy use on all these fields. You know, in, in particular, the, the two grass fields next to the baseball field. Things like the softball field, it's kind of down in a hole, down in a hollow, it doesn't really set itself up well, we're gonna explore options to, can we reconfigure the site? To make athletics much more of a campus athletics program than fields that. That function well, but aren't interconnected as efficiently as, as we'd like. And the same thing with the, the access into the parking, the bus drop off, the entire loop, you know, as you use, if we make improvements. Uh, this is a fun project for somebody in my office because of the topography here. You know, you have some really steep topography and, and you've got a nice, you've got a nice stream that runs right through it, but you've got some, some constraints. Uh, you know, and that's for the campus, so, um, and some of the things that just need to be, you know. I wouldn't call them deferred maintenance, but things like the basketball courts that just really need to be revitalized, relocated, something that kind of seem they're, they're useful. Existence, um. And then the transportation center, we had these, I think this is right now kind of been taken off of the priority list as far as I. I understand for, for site improvements at the moment. And then with the buildings, the ground really is going to be thrown back into, uh, all the other work we do at Columbia and the site specific site. So here's a rendering, I just wanted to show the, the board, uh. An example of a space that's currently, there's a, there's a chalked map of the, the United States. Out in the middle of a paved courtyard here at Janay. Um, and it's a, it's a nice little space, it's got some trees that were planted quite a while ago, there's some size to them. But there's opportunities to create an outdoor courtyard space that's really an outdoor education center, it can be an outdoor classroom size, it can be an area that. If you think of a. I know we're middle schoolers, so we're not college kids yet, and we don't need them to be, right? But, but, um, or sorry, elementary kids, but, um. This is, has places for kids to congregate, you know, to relax. It connect between this, the athletics facility, the playground, you know, and the school. Have, have, uh, opportunities to throw in art and culture, things that kind of stimulate, you know. You know, the children, uh, we've done this successfully, you see pictures over on the right side, but those are just examples of. There's a school downstate we did last year, I put an outdoor chalkboard and it's, you know, that's part of the programming they like. And, and it's really become wonderful for them, cause they've been able to do outdoor classrooms, you know, in a nice space. Um, some of this has become involved because of COVID. You know, the ability to get kids outside and get some more air and get people spread out, but this is just an idea of visioning. This is not the final design by any means, so it shouldn't be, not be interpreted that way, but we really like to work. You know, with the districts, with the, the teachers, the facility people, understand what is the best. That process to come up with something like that is probably an eight meeting, ten meeting process before you really get settled on it. Uh, and then one more showing athletics, this here for golf, um. It's flipped around from the previous view, but you always, you know, people are familiar, I assume, uh. With it, so here's the idea of the track that could be done, right now you've got a football field that runs up and down the page. And then you have two, uh, one other main grass area where to the far right, as you're closest to Hayes Road. And then you have a wet area, we believe and we've got to do a lot of engineering to make this happen, but we, we believe we could. Get one, if we go with the track and a synthetic field, there's a ton of program that can be used, whether it's youth. You know, whether, you know, it's middle school, elementary, you can really expand the district's opportunities, you have land availability to do that here. And then these other areas, we could have a competition field, you know, and then some additional play areas, so we increased your athletic programming in a space. And some of that's really important as we go through the process to cut down the amount of, uh, busing and trips and costs. You know, transportation to go from one district to another, you know, the, uh. Loss of play, having to coordinate and deal with go to other facilities out of district, you know, for, for events, things of that nature. Um, and then we will look at the space planning around everything else and say, there's an outdoor edu- environmental. You know, garden space before, but if you have an environmental program and you can put in the programming of the environmental education. You know, we want to dedicate and find spaces to be able to do that. You know, uh, currently in that, there aren't any paved court surfaces out there, so we're talking to Ryan. Uh, athletics, we thought it'd be a really nice thing to have a multi-purpose court surface, so our children could be able to play with that. Use that as recess, uh, and potentially relocate the base, uh, modified baseball field that you see. So this is, call it concept one, design one, we'll, we'll end up at design five and then, then everybody will be happy. So that in general is a summary of, of the site and like I said, we've, we're under discovery, we've kind of building the program elements. Gotten some feedback already from the principals, so any that we have, you know, it's greatly appreciated. We need a lot more feedback from the principals and the people that are using the facilities every day, that's the tools, uh, I, I'm. I'm a hired pen, we have some good thoughts, but that's, that's kind of our role here on the site work for you, so it's that balancing of infrastructure. Costs, what athletics needs, what the children need for recess, you know, um. And, and access and safety and security, so all those kind of will meld in this process. And then these folks, God will be tell us which ones we can do and package, you know, as you, as you build your projects out from your referent. My dog alive, sorry.
Are you looking at outdoor space for every school, after a classroom?
Contemplating it, we have not programmed outdoor space for every school, but contemplating the prospects of it, that's where we really need to hear from the teachers and the principals.
Is there any utilization of it in the winter or, I, I don't know how.
Typically not.
Yeah, I didn't think so.
Typically not.
Unless we get a mild winter.
Or heaters.
Okay, thank you, Andy. Um, so now we're going to look a little bit, um. Some of the library, some of the idea and, uh, um, the team put it together. So there were three items that are common to all the library librarian when we had our meeting. So we had the different meeting with the librarian for the elementary school and we had meeting with the, uh, middle school and, uh, high school. Cause obviously the two activity in this two kind of grade of library are a little bit different between one and the other. So, um, so we, we looked at all the live, the elementary library, the three in the high school, middle school. The three common items or topics are, one, so the library has a. Still, uh, has some kind of consultation and book, uh, area they would like to conserve through the design. Then there is the new piece is the new up and coming trend, they are the STEM or STEAM. Because I would, I'd like to add the EA between, because the art architecture is part of engineering, technology and science. Um, and then the, the other piece is the, uh, uh, media center hub. So where kids, they, they can have a classroom or they can use free to use computer. So you can see here, this is the Janay Library. At this point, we keep it right now for a budgetarian purpose and also for idea. We keep in the library in the same space, maybe when we move forward with the design and maybe, uh, we evaluate with the principal, with the librarian. Maybe we find the space in the, in the school that maybe suited better for the library. So Ryan, this one here is the, um, sorry, Janay here where we are. So you can see on your right, on the, your right part of the building is the, um, consultation area with. Movable furniture, so another items then we keep, uh, as a common is the flexibility through the furniture. So if all the furniture you can see here, except probably the circulation desk, they will be all, uh, movable. The bookcase are movable, the chair obviously movable and the table are movable. So if, uh, one activity changed from one library to, from one period to another one, the librarian or the teacher can easily move those furniture. Um, to create the space that they need. So you will see, so if we start from the right going to the left, we have the consultation area with the bookcase, then we have the circulation desk. Then we have a more bookcase and then the area where, um, it's more for STEM or STEAM activity. Uh, we can see a little bit in, uh, some details, it's where the kids a little bit are free to or. Sitting on the floor or some soft seating or we, we can see those niche, there's a, uh, teal color, they are niche in, in. Because there is a, an existing, um, closet there, so we have the space to create those niche. Where some kids maybe can sit and read if they need to be isolated from the other kids. So if we can look at it through, so here you can see, so we have the, the bookcase, the bookcase heights are being reduced from the current heights. So it's the safety and the librarian fro- from the circulation desk has free view all, all the library. So we can, that's one of the issue they, they mentioned to us where they are, they doing, um, some activity at their, at their desk. They are, they will not see, they will not able to see right now through all the library, so reducing the heights of the bookcase. Uh, it give a little bit more free to view through. Um, so this, this is the view of the media center. You can see there is, they would like to have a screen on the wall, so it's now a portable screen that doesn't, that take too much space. So we have a bookcase, we have the media center, uh, and their view on the upper right, that's where it's the view of the current library. So if we go through, like I say, I'm gonna try to go fast, those, this is from the media center looking to the, uh, STEM area. And then this is the circulation desk, so we will, um, center the circulation desk for a better, uh, supervision. And those are the, the parts for the STEM where we would like, you know, this is, again, this is not design, this is just idea, then we, uh. We have experienced with other school, we were, we've been successful, so we provide the tools and resource to, um, to the district. And then you guys make a final decision which, which you like, so you, we will see other stuff. Um, and this is a summary of, of the four view we just saw. So now we go to Columbia High, obviously nice big space, um. Uh, so here we just tried to create the, um, space in the space. But without fiscal division, because again, uh, supervision is a, it's a, it's a, it's an issue. Um, so if we go through, so for, uh, actually I'm gonna go back, unfortunate. So the low, the two lower part at the entrance, um, those are on the right, on the left. The right is the STEM area, the left is the media center area. And then we keep on the top, we keep a, a kind of lounge setup for kids. Is especially for high school now, the libraries are also a collaboration area where they get together. And they collaborate in different activity or different tasks. Um, and then you will see, we keep the, the nice big windows, we keep there as a, a central focal point of the, from the entrance. Uh, all the way to the, to the exterior wall and we create a center, a three hundred sixty degree circulation desk. Uh, now we go through a little bit, some of those detail, this is the circulation desk, you will see the bigger, uh, windows. So on the left, there is the media center, on the right is the, um, the STEM area. And you can see, uh, on the top right again, even each picture on the top right has the existing view of the same space. So here, this is the, uh, media center part. And this one is the, um, STEM area. A lot of part, when we talk with STEM or STEAM is mostly is, um. Storage, because, uh, all the tools are providing those bucket and then the kids, they assembly and they created their own, uh, their own, uh, models. So like I mentioned, we want to create in the area of consultation, also a, um, a lounge area where kids can collaborate. Among themselves and because the, the nice, you know, the, these infrastructures already there, there is a really nice windows there, so we want to use as a focal point. These are other. So again, no design, just food for thoughts. And last not least, uh, golf, uh, golf is a little bit interesting and challenging because it's on two different levels. Um, and, uh, for, for a, a middle school, it's a little bit smaller, so we kind of. Tried to steal some of the room around, um, so we took two, uh, two classroom, they are on the left of the.
Nothing to say, don't worry about it. Forty-five minutes.
If I offend anybody. Okay. So, um, so where we create again, the three different area, um. Uh, media center, STEM and, uh, consultation. Um, this is like I said, it's a little bit challenging because there's some two level. And currently, when you get in the library, it looks like the ramp and the stairs are the focal point. Where they shouldn't, because it's just, uh, it should be a passage from one level to another one and probably should be as a, a secondary than instead the focal, so. Um, we are going to relocate the stairs at the ramp on the side, so we, we can create something more interesting on the. Um, so this is some, some, um, some idea how we can achieve, um, small collaboration room. But still with glass, uh, glass wall, so there is a, still a supervision with that. Um, when I, now then I'm looking the picture, one of us saw items, a program then librarian, they start. Instead to have the regular stack book, they prefer to have the, uh, cover of the books display. Uh, display program, yes, and so we, we, in this picture, you can see we provide the furniture today, achieve the program they, um, they are starting in their school. Um, this one here again, different kind of, uh, room, but same glass. But it can be closed or open, depend on the amount of kids or depend on the amount, oh, what kind of activity you have. If we have a, uh, let's say we have a board room, a board meeting at golf, we can open, have, uh, achieve the same size of room we need. Um, again, uh, seating, soft seating, hard seating, hot, different area where kids or, you know, small adult can. Uh, collaborate among themselves, because right now everything is collaboration, new trend, collaboration. Uh, the library is not just you go with silence, actually it's more activity. So this would be the new center where currently is the ramp that goes around and the stairs. This will create a lounge area for, for the student. And this is, uh, this is, so we lower, so we lowered the, the heights of the bookshelf. And we create a straight view from the, for the librarian from the circulation desk looking down, because right now it's kind of, uh, um. There's an obstacle if they want to try to keep and look if any kids, they were talking about some kids get hidden behind the bookshelf, so. Yeah. No fun anymore. And so this is state is from the bottom looking up to the, to the circulation desks at the main, uh, main entrance. Again, this is a three, um, one of the things then, it, it's not on those, uh, uh, concept yet. But what are we trying to do also for each library, we are creating, uh. We are creating, we want to emphasize the entrance because we want to make sure that the library is a destination for all student. It's not just for the books, but they can do activity inside. So probably we will do something at the entrance just to emphasize the entrance. And so create a more welcoming enter to the library. So, so that conclude the library, some additional updates. So as far as the HVAC, so my mechanical and electrical team, they went through pretty much all schools now, tried to collect as much data as possible for the existing system that is currently in a school. And they are, we met with the district control vendor that's currently trained just to get an idea how currently all the system has been controlled. Because if we go enhance the system and provide AC, we want to make sure that the control they talk to each other. And they are currently reviewing all the collect, all the data has been collected, has been put it together and option per each school is but is going to be developed. Because maybe one system then works in one school, maybe doesn't work in another. We talked about if we have a high ceiling, maybe we can do a system that is a duck. If we don't have, we have to come up with a different system. And then the next step now will be the potential of that for the electrical piece. My electrical engineer, once we have the selection of the of the unit, we'll evaluate the current load, then Paul provide the two years of utility bills. So now we have the understanding of the what's the current load of the building. And once we have the new equipment, we will see where the future load will be. And they will determine if we need only upgrade the switchgear, the electrical switchgear, or we need to upgrade also the service for from the utility. So next step, I think in a couple of weeks, we will meet with Train and our partner Turner and review the option. And then before we present to the district, we want to make sure that we are all on the same page before we do that. Additional general update, we are starting the secret process. And Labella, we attended to each of the faculty meeting except GOF with Mr. Simon, Jennifer and Paul. We provide the overview of the capital project and it's going for May.
The GOF's meeting is on Monday. So our last meeting is on Monday.
It is a Monday, this Monday?
I believe it's this coming Monday.
Maybe next month. I don't think I have in my calendar.
We'll connect on it. I have my calendar right before this meeting and I thought it was next Monday.
Okay, because I didn't see, so maybe I missed. And then next, I'll give you Jennifer Mulligan.
Okay. Thank you, Pasquale. So Pasquale talked about that we're initiating the secret process. So we want to go through some key time, the key timeline to get to the to the vote in on May 21st, 2024. So there are some key dates that are coming up. Really right now between December and February, we do have some fluidity. The architect is working on finalizing, you know, scope. And also Turner is working on the cost estimates to determine the project budget. By the end of February, what we'll be looking to do is have the board adopt a resolution of of the priority items in the capital project. In early March, bond council will be preparing resolutions for the board. And then by March 13th, 2024, in order to allow notice of publications, we'll actually have the resolution with the actual bond proposition. So April to May is when we'll be doing a lot of, we're going to be doing a lot of communication efforts over the next several months between our faculty meetings and visiting the local municipalities and volunteer fire departments. So there'll be a lot of outreach that's happening. But April and May is when we'll actually have like some physical newsletters that will be going out to the community. And then we have our publication of the notice of bond referendum, which will follow the same schedule as our budget, public notices that will be out there. So we want to give this picture of what this timeline is really coming to shape. And just to provide some information to the board to, so you know what to expect over the next few months.
Okay, I said a lot of stuff happened in a month and a half. But like I always tell Mr. Simons, we have to keep the foot on the gas. We can't slow down.
So just for the board's information, myself, Mark, Simons, Jen, Paul met last week?
Yes.
Last week, last Tuesday. And we, you know, what you saw there with a lot of the initial overhead const, pictures of the district sites. We had a chance to go through the all the different pieces of the documents that were previously. So if you have any other feedback you want to provide us and Jeff and Jen and Paul about some of those items, because we gave them quite a bit. I saw a few things popped in there, which was good. And yeah, so you guys talked about, which is excellent. And you take our feedback seriously. So I think that if you have anything that you want to bring forward as part of that, questions around that packet of information, please let them know.
We're hoping to bring forward to the board the seeker resolution soon. We had hoped for the December 20 meeting. Our firm is still reviewing the type of project that is, there are two different types. So we may not, because of some of the fieldwork that's being done on things that may be a more complicated type of seeker review. So it may not happen on the 20th, but ideally if we could get any further questions or input from the board by the 20th, that would be helpful.
Yes, this next couple of months is, is going to be critical and just it might be a little fluid. But the real hard key deadlines are going to be upcoming, late February, March.
Okay.
Questions or comments? Good to see we're on track and moving fast.
Thanks, guys.
Excellent. Thank you for being here. Appreciate it. So next on the agenda for discussion item is that CASDA proposal for the UPK sustainability study. This is something we talked about not too long ago. Mr. Simons, can you introduce the topic?
Yes, just briefly, several meetings ago, when the board determined that we were going to add pre-K classes, the board had a comprehensive discussion about looking at the long term sustainability of universal pre-K in the district. We have expanded UPK since we've received UPK funds. So I asked CASDA, which is the Capital Area School Development Agency, if they could do a study for our district regarding the feasibility of pre-K from two perspectives. One, sustaining and maintaining what we currently have. And secondly, expanding for all eligible students, any interested students and families. So we have used CASDA in the past. I am a member of the CASDA executive board. And we have also used this particular consultant that is Dr. Lee Boardick, who was a retired superintendent well regarded for enrollment and attendance, his own studies in the past. And we also used CASDA to evaluate the administrator position within human resources prior to hiring Marissa as a director. So they do good work. It's extensive work that the district administration board needs to get done. None of us individually really have the time or the resources that an outside group would bring to the process to make it more thorough. It's $165 an hour rate, which is reasonable according to what I know about this type of work. The hours that are estimated for the project may or may not be the 71 hours that's estimated. It depends on the completion of the project. And this would be brought forward to the board in the form of a presentation and report of the feasibility study by the second meeting in February. And that would be timed around any budget options that the board may need to be making at that time. Ask for the board's questions and support for the study. I've told Mike Picarello, the executive director of CASDA, we would let him know tomorrow if we're going forward.
Any questions or comments on moving forward the study? Something we had asked for, very comprehensive. I know, I know Lee Boardick as well, excellent work. And I think part of this is it can tie into some of the capital project planning.
Did you just say the timeframe again, Jeff?
Well, we'd like to have it completed by the second board meeting in February.
By February, okay.
Could be financing budget things, yes, things like that.
This, this doesn't include any community engagement, right? This is just looking at our infrastructure and resources and the need. When, when we say we're looking for, you know, demand and stuff, that just means from what we've had requested in the past years or?
They're looking, no, they're going to look at the financial implications of maintaining pre-K and expanding pre-K. They're going to look at building capacity to add pre-K, which would be part of the connection to our capital project that Mr. Dino just spoke about. They're going to look at district enrollment data into the best of their ability, project the number of students that would need to be served in the district. If, you know, for example, based on kindergarten data and enrollment projection study, approximately how many students, if we were to offer it to every student, what that would cost, would we have space? And kind of put it all into a report that's comprehensive so that when you do engage the community, we all know, we're all working from the same set of information. So when those questions come up in the community engagement, we'll have a study that helps to address those questions and have that study available for the community to take a look at as part of that engagement process.
Any other questions?
Just a comment, I appreciate you putting this together because in the very beginning of this project, we, we talked about this. And I think in order to move it forward, we really need the, the hard facts so that we can bring it to the community and say, this is what we're in for. And this is what we're trying to do. And this is what it's going to cost. So I, I, I support it and appreciate you being mindful of what our concerns were for this.
Thank you. I think it's important.
Yeah.
Second, John.
I, I third what John is saying. I think it's important that we're informed when we make a decision. And I know the board has talked about not making ad hoc decisions, you know, every year and having the demand be high and us trying to add, add classes on and, and, and find like community partners. So I think this is the way to go. This is the way to move forward to decide, you know, as a community, what the need and demand is, the desire is for.
Thank you.
And do we have a sense of where the state is in terms of aid and providing aid and the differences in the reimbursement rate?
At this point, the only thing I know is that when the NISCIS Legislative Committee, which I serve on, met with representatives of the governor's office, including her new Assistant Secretary for Education, she said that universal pre-K was one of the four priorities of the governor coming forward within the budget, that there's some information that they've received that they, they don't fully understand why districts are not able to spend the allocation that is available. So I explained why that was and also the different funding streams. There is universal pre-K and then there's the targeted pre-K and then there's special education pre-K. And they'd like to look at the differences of those and maybe make it simpler. So that was the discussion we had. So I know it is a priority of the governor as part, among other priorities that she's going to focus on for education.
Excellent. Good information. All right, so move forward with that study.
Thank you, everybody, for the support.
Next items, we have quite a few items on the regular business. First one is approval of programs for resident children with disabilities. Any questions or comments? Need a motion to approve that? Jennifer, second, Jesse, all those in favor? So the next one probably needs a little bit of explanation right on the public hearing regarding the reserve.
We'll let Jen take that one.
Jen, there's a transfer.
Yes, so back in October, we met to review the reserve funding plan for the June 30, 2023 financial statements. And part of that review, we looked at a couple of reserve funds and opportunities. We funded the bus reserve. We also looked at a future opportunity to fund the capital reserve fund with monies out of the ERS, the Employees Retirement System Reserve Fund. And what we had looked at was what that level of reserve is in relation to the annual expenditures and saw an opportunity to allow for, to help fund part of this capital project. That particular capital reserve fund has $750,000 in it. We're looking to have up to $2 million put in that, which would be noted as part of the bond proposition. So under genuine municipal law, we're allowed to, through having a public hearing, allow us to liquidate that ERS reserve fund and transfer those monies into other reserve funds, which the capital reserve fund is one of those eligible funds. So basically, this is a authorization to publish the notice of public hearing. That public hearing will occur at the first meeting in January. And then after that, there'll be a proposed resolution to actually do the transfer.
Any questions or comments on that? Need a motion to approve? John, second. Joanne, all those in favor? Approved, so we'll schedule that for the next, for January?
Yes, January 6th.
Physician services, driver physical agreement, anything, any questions there? Need a motion to approve that? Jennifer, second. John, all those in favor? So we have a conversation we had recently. And then we have the amendment to Marissa's contract. Questions or comments? Seeing none, need a motion to approve that? Jesse, second. John, all those in favor? Grouped.
Thank you.
And the second one is for Mr. Stiles. Roy, any questions? Motion? Second, Jesse, all those in favor? Approved. And then this was always an interesting one, the warrant, the warrant of the unpaid taxes where the county makes us whole. After this, how many years? Nine years, I think I guess. County makes us whole and then they collect the taxes on our revenue.
I believe they keep the
So that's what this authorizes.
The town of Skodak retains the lees.
It's very long history.
I, I think there might be, and I'm interested to learn it.
Basically, the board is turning over the data to the, to the county so that the county can follow through and pay us.
Yes, so they'll re levy those monies on the annual town property, town and county property taxes.
Yep.
Make us whole.
So the county writes us a check?
Yes.
Which is good.
For their collection and, yep, for the properties in Skodak.
Okay, so resolution to approve that warrant. Need motion. Joanne, second. Emily, all those in favor? Approved. This is the, next one is a resolution for the cooperative energy purchasing service, natural gas, electricity, we've been doing this for many years. As a cooperative with the, with the BOCs. And any questions on that? Seeing none, need a motion to approve that? John, I need a second. Shao, all those in favor? Approved.
Mike, can I just interrupt for a second? Here, can you take a look at the video? Somebody just text me that said they don't have a picture and they don't have any volume.
On the stream?
On the stream. There's no, it's only a picture of you, like if you're
A picture of Peter?
Yeah, I can see, I can see what they're streaming right here.
Okay, I'll, I'll let them know. They only have, I mean, they sent me a picture of a screen that just has your face on it. Okay. Sorry.
Troubleshoot that and keep us posted.
I, the one of the two people.
Halloween was over.
Thank you, Shao. Hope we get that fixed. Resolution on teacher tenure? Questions or comments? Need motion to approve that? John, second. Jesse, all those in favor? Approved, congratulations. And that's for Tyler and Sabine Murphy.
Both of them indicated Tyler was coaching and involved in a lot of things in the evening. And Sabine had, Sabine was with us at a meeting yesterday and wanted to extend her thanks to the board, but couldn't be here. She had an outside commitment, so both wanted to be here.
Congratulations to those. And then we have a TA up for tenure. He'll have to help me with the pronunciation, Marissa. Awusu Anane, right? Need a motion to approve that? Jess, second. Emily, all those in favor? Emily, all those in favor? Approved, congratulations. And now we go to the audit report that was presented and to approve the independent audit presentation and materials. Jess, second. Joanne, all those in favor? Approved. We have an EGTA MOA. This is about Appendix D, any explanation, Marissa?
Yeah, so our committee met on November 16th to review the unfilled Appendix D positions, and those advisor positions totaled about $7,030. So we looked at the number of unpaid clubs that are currently running and approved by the Board of Education, and our committee is recommending to compensate the advisor for Dungeons and Dragons, $615. Advisor for No Place for Hate at the Middle School, $2,775. Gay Straight Alliance at the Middle School, $1,000, and then the Belltop TV Morning Program, $1,900. We looked at the club schools, how many students they had per meeting, number of meetings per year, if they had any fundraising activities. And these compensation figures fall under that $7,000 money amount for unused clubs.
Thank you. Any questions from Marissa on that? Need a motion to approve that? Jen, I'm sorry, Joanne, second. Jennifer, all those in favor? Approved. Glad to be able to do that. Glad you're working well together as a team and doing, providing the support. And then the adoption of the 2324 Board of Education Goals. Peter, can you go to the graphic? Which is the, is the second one? Nope, the next one. There's two, there's a, yep, next one, there you go. So this is our newly designed graphic. I want to thank Roy for putting it together.
I was working with Mark Adam.
Mark Adam, thank you. You can see that our, our future-driven education, whole owner focus, safe inclusive and diverse, and then the more detail behind those pieces. So thanks for the board's input and the administration for putting that all together. Any questions or comments on those? Need a motion to approve? Emily, second. Jess, all those in favor? Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Look forward to hearing more about our progress. So next year, we've got these things rolling on a little different timeline. We'll work together to hit those, but we know we're on the right track.
We did, in anticipation of the meeting tonight, we did, we have had a couple of discussions with our administrators regarding the goals, including this morning, and we, the administrators will be sharing this information with all of our faculty and staff, so.
This aligns with last year and the opening day and subsequent conversations and raising our capital project planning as well.
Absolutely.
So moving on to committee reports, we'll start with Marissa.
Thank you, Ms. Chavino. This is the meeting minutes for our meeting for Appendix D, which we just briefly spoke about. So I don't want to repeat anything, but one of the takeaways that our committee really needs to focus on is looking at those clubs. And we have about six this year that are not being run. We need to develop a process on how to go about removing those clubs so that these unpaid clubs can be compensated in years moving forward. Mr. Stiles is going to be having conversations with principals regarding any, you know, interest there might be for other clubs that might be more, more relevant to our students. And then our representatives from the AGTA will also be, you know, meeting with their individuals as well to see, you know, what their thoughts are on some type of process moving forward.
Thank you. Any questions from Marissa? We go to Roy or Jen?
I'm not sure.
Jen, thank you.
You're good, okay.
Jen's good? Okay, well, it's Roy.
Sure. So I do have, want to go over two meeting minutes for our CCS. So October 18th, just briefly, we were able to get some, you know, this year's program review updates from our Academic Intervention Services, arts, mathematics, and social studies. The process has started for all of those with their, with their program review, and we've begun the process to endorse, you know, mission statements, and then moving on to two goals and some of those as well. We also had the finishing of presentations for summer curriculum projects. Really had some really great projects this year, and this was the second half of, of all those projects, and, you know, looking forward to continuing that process and having some really great projects for this upcoming year. At this meeting, we also had, Mr. Goodwin gave an update on computer-based testing that is starting up this year. Fifth grade students and eighth grade students, as well as at the high school level, SATs are now going to be computer-based, our PSATs will be computers, computer-based as well. So Mr. Goodwin gave an update on that, and then I spoke a little bit about, sorry, our plan for this upcoming year. This will be the first time that we are doing computer-based testing at fifth grade and eighth grade. So after consulting with Mr. Goodwin and, you know, the principals, we came up with a plan. The state has done it a little different where they, they've really just given a large window, and you can administer your exams anywhere in that window. So a little bit different this year to make sure that we're supporting the buildings, you know, with tech support is, you know, some schools will be having their tests on, you know, two different days, then other schools will be having theirs on days. That way, we're not bombarding our technology department and, you know, I'm not going with, there are no tech issues, but if there are, we're able to support those issues with that. We're continuing, you know, to work with Mr. Goodwin, the tech department, principals, and Lisa Mahar, working with some of our Questar support, doing some professional development within the classrooms on different ways that we're making sure we're preparing our students for those computer-based tests. So I don't want to say looking forward to computer-based testing, but we will be well-prepared, and our students will be well-prepared for that as well.
It's finally, it's finally here, right, Roy?
It is.
How many, how long has it been going on?
Yeah, I was hoping they would continue to say, say no and train moving, but we'll be, we'll be fine.
It's been years, yeah.
It has been a long time. We also had a proposal to add three new titles to our 10th grade ELA curriculum, which the committee endorsed. And then also, we have just given an update regarding some professional development. Again, we're doing a lot of really great professional development, not just on our professional development days, but also the embedded professional development work that we're doing with our Questar partnership and, you know, Lisa Mahar as well. I'm going to, sorry, jump over to our November 8th meeting. Again, got some program review updates. We had our mission statement endorsed for our AIS program. We had our program goals for art that were endorsed, and social studies also had their mission statement endorsed. There were two new course proposals that were brought, brought up that you will see there. Both of those were endorsed. One of them will be a 12th grade semester-long elective. And then also, if you remember last year, we had a new honors physics course that was brought forward, and Mr. Ross talked about kind of the two-year plan with that, and the next piece of that plan would be offering a college physics course, so that is there as well, will be endorsed. The board will be getting presentations from them regarding the, those new courses at our next, I think it's December 20th, Board of Education meeting. And then just gave an overview, we had our November 1st professional development full day. I just gave an overview of that day and also, you know, really received some positive feedback regarding that PD day. You know, we had some really great work that was done at the middle school and high school with Same Here Global, which is a new partnership that we're working with. Again, just got great feedback. And then we will be participating in the March 15th Regional Professional Development Day through Questar.
And Roy, can I just say that I, I got a lot of compliments from the parents that we were able to get that November 1st off. So I know it's hard for us to do every year, but you guys were definitely winners for allowing them to have that, have that off. Thank you for working so hard for that.
Yeah, I think, yeah, the calendar committee, I have a feeling that that's going to, with any luck, stick around.
Yeah.
That was a popular day.
Right, yeah. The program review for AIS, I see the mission statement was approved. When is that scheduled to be presented? Do you recall?
So those, all of these are usually presented after the final, the final program review is endorsed by CCS. So this past year, they were done in, can't remember which September meeting we had, you know, we had CTE that was done at one meeting. We had our world languages that was done at another meeting. So usually, at least last year when I was here, and now, the full program review after it's fully endorsed by CCS is presented to the board.
Just to ask you the particular intention to this one, Academic Intervention Services? I think we've put a lot of resources using the federal funds in the last few years and, you know, just trying to get the data and making sure that, that the services that we're providing students are achieving the results that we, we hope they do. Okay.
We spoke today with the administrators about, a little bit about the budget development process, and one of the things we're going to be doing in January is looking at what AIS data we have available right now, and looking at the distribution of academic intervention and early intervention positions across the district, so that'll be part of our budget process as well, because of looking at, you know, the distribution of the staff.
Yeah. I didn't ask Mr. Simons this, but we do have a January window that we do our, our star assessments.
That's right.
And I'd be happy to give a presentation, you know, on that data, which will give us a good, it will give us that fall to winter data and the growth, which will be good to be able to look at our.
We do that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Anyone else?
The two new classes that came up, I guess it was at the November meeting, the English and the physics, after they fill, come and present, you said, and then after that, if they're, you know, approved, would those be for next fall? Would kids register the spring?
Yes, they would. They would be able to be, if they are approved through the board, they'd be able to be added to our program of studies where students would be able to take them for next fall.
It's good, I mean, is there a minimum enrollment for some of those, like, high-level college physics?
No, but we are talking about reviewing all of the courses and setting some limitations
on enrollment for next year as it regards to the budget process, and maybe some elective courses will be offered every other year, depending on their enrollment. So we want to be able to work to add these new courses within the existing number of FTEs that we have, because we're going to be anticipating a tighter budget than we have last year, and actually, in the last three years. So we're all in favor of the course. It looks very interesting to the students, but we want to make sure that that course can be implemented with a number of teachers that we have in those respective departments.
Yes, and that was part of it. There, there is no expectation for additional FTEs for these courses.
Just briefly, a small group of our Committee on Global Education, yesterday, we met over at the Albany Community Center, which was formerly referred to as the Turkish, Turkish-American Center, Cultural Center, Turkish Cultural Center, and this was something that was brought up by Kathleen Curt, a board member, a couple of years ago. I went out and met with the individuals that run the center several weeks ago. They wanted to connect with our school district, so we brought a team there to talk about opportunities that they can provide. We do have students from Turkey who are receiving ENL services. I know at the elementary level from Red Mill, they do a lot of programs for children and families that have come here in the region. It's right, it's located right here on, in Rensselaer, on Aiken, Aiken Avenue, I think it is, or Aiken Street. So they're open to coming in and doing classroom presentations, participating in our morning programs, and also, you know, having us come and visit and learn about some of the programs they offer in the community, not just for Turkish families who have immigrated to the United States, but other families, and making us more aware of the cultural resources that are available in the community. It was a really great connection. This time, I, I did know what to do with my, it was called Turkish Delight.
Turkish Delight.
The first time I visited there, I thought it was a sugar cube, and I dropped it in my coffee. Unfortunately, I remembered that quite well, and I got some ribbing yesterday. I was joined by Roy, Marissa, Dr. Pennick was with me, Helen Sciacchi, and Sabine Murphy, who's one of our ENL teachers, and Leanne Diedrich, who's one of our speech pathologists on the committee. It was a really great experience. They really were welcoming and warm. They had coffee, and we talked and we toured the facility. It was very, very nice, and they want to work with our district, so. More to come on that. I think it will be a good partnership.
Excellent.
Yeah. I was just going to say, you must have never watched The Lion Witch in the wardrobe.
I did not, sorry. I thought, I thought it was a sugar cube, and I dropped it in her coffee, and they all laughed at me. Yesterday, I didn't do it.
Sure you did.
They made sure that all of our staff that was there with me made aware of that. It's a good experience.
Yeah, those partnerships are important, more we can make those. Those, those can be based partnerships, welcome our, our students, be great. All right.
No, that's it.
Thank you. Table motions, we have none. All business, board members, anything? We have a consent agenda, plus we have addendums related to the Science Olympiad and a couple personnel items. Any questions or comments on that? There's definitely some interesting ones on there that we'll please to see. Need a motion to approve that by consent? Joanne, second. John, all those in favor? Including the addendums, approved. Thank you very much.
Just to report, the cert, the, the background check fingerprint clearance was received today regarding the new payroll clearance.
Oh, good.
So we're all sat there.
Good luck, Jen.
Yes.
All right. New business, board members, anything? Public forum? Mr. Harkin?
I would just like to announce that Anthony Servadone has his 400th win tonight as our wrestling coach, who just left there this afternoon. I just left him from the meeting, and they were ahead, and they came to tie, and they won their last two matches by 10 to give him his 400th win.
Congratulations, Mr. Suno.
Congratulations.
Glad to see our Terry come back and help coach and get that more, nice milestone. Anyone else? Okay. Word for him, I'm stood on my right with Emily. Also, Joanne? Jess? Jess? John's good. All right. And I'm good, I'm see, I just really pleased to see the progress on the capital project planning and feel that LaBella and Turner, the partnership you have with them, started and developed and working, obviously, the work you're doing, your team here, very much appreciated. So again, get that feedback, look at those documents, and I think we're really pleased. It's not just the site work, there's a lot of things going on in there that we want to make sure we can try to do. With that, we do have need for executive session regarding contract negotiations and personnel matters. Do not expect any board business after a session, so I need a motion to go into executive session. Jesse, second. Joanne, all those in favor? All right. Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.